And gentlemen, can you take a seat? If there's no seat, just in the back or someplace. And will you join us there, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance? Barbara, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thank you. How are you? Just one announcement. Mr. Yellen will not be with us tonight. His father passed away. But we have a quorum, and we're going to go on with the meeting. And all I ask is, everybody, please be just not repetitive if you can avoid it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part one, item one, number 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge. Item two, number 2011-10, Anthony Leteri. Item three, number 773, Scholar Estates. Item four, number 1092, Winston's Run. Item five, the 288 application of Olivia Estates. Item six, the letter of interpretation for the Polish National Church. Part two, item seven, number 2010-06, KVC Holdings. Item eight, number 1053A, Berg Estates. Item nine, number nine, 11A, Glen Hill Northern. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment.
Is there anyone here to be heard on those items to be adjourned? No one? A motion, please.
Motion to adjourn the item three.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. We've, I've been requested there to have a change in the agenda. As you see it, I put the Carlson property first there. When we get past, after we've gone the Jason Estates, we'll do the Carlson property first, and then the FB4, all right? The attorney's going to handle both of those applications anyway.
Mr. Chairman, we're doing Jason Estates first.
What?
Are we, yes? Okay.
Yes. Jason.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under part three, item 10, number 889B, Jason Estates. The applicant is requesting final approval to subdivide 2.093 acres into two single-family residential building lots on property containing steep slopes in order to construct this subdivision variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals to disturb environmentally sensitive lands as required. Before the BZA can act, it is required by Section 277.6 of Town Law to consider the Planning Board's comments to the BZA. The Planning Board previously approved this application on September 21, 1994 as Jason Estates, number 889. A copy of the approved map is attached to your memorandum. At that time, the Planning Board had the powers to grant variances for subdivision applications that proposed to disturb environmentally sensitive land. In or about 2001, these powers were transferred to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The original subdivision application proposed to create two single-family residential lots, retaining the existing residence on lot number one, and constructing a new residence on the proposed lot number two. The subject property has road frontage on two town roads known as Meadow Road and Gardener Road. The property is zoned R21, single-family residential, 21,780 square feet minimum, and is heavily wooded. All of the property fronting Meadow Road contains steep slopes that rise from a 52-foot elevation along the street to 110 feet, approximately 250 feet back from the street at the rear property line for lot number two. Because of the steep slopes on lot number two, any construction would require excavating the property and building retaining walls to secure the cut slopes. The amount of excavation and regrading proposed on the original map would have reduced the overall elevation of the site by approximately 13 feet, as shown on the attached illustration at the back of this memorandum, and based on the existing elevation of 83 feet where the garage was proposed, and the new elevation of 70 feet. The applicant did not post a performance bond for the approved subdivision, and the Planning Board approval expired September 21, 1995. The applicant submitted this new application to the Planning Department on December 4, 2008. The application was distributed to all town departments concerned for review. The Department of Environment and Waterways contacted the applicant by letter dated December 31, 2008, informing them that the property is located within the boundaries of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Wild Scenic and Recreational River System, and would require a work permit from the New York State DEC prior to any town approval. DEW suspended further review of the application until the applicant received the New York State DEC permit. The DEC issued a work permit dated March 1, 2012, a copy is attached to your memorandum, requiring the applicant not to disturb portions of lot number two during construction and leave them in their natural state, and requires other areas that will be disturbed during construction to be revegetated with regional species of trees, shrubs, and grasses, and left to return to its natural state. Upon receipt of a copy of the DEC permit, DEW recommenced review of the application. This application proposes to create two single-family residential lots, retaining the existing residence on lot number one, and constructing a new residence on lot number two. The new map proposes additional excavation of the site, and due to the amount of excavation, more of the property will need to be cleared and regraded, and require additional retaining walls. Compared to the previously approved map, this proposal would reduce the overall elevation of the site by approximately 21 feet, where the garage is proposed at an elevation of 62 feet, as illustrated on the attached illustration. The Engineering Department, in their memorandum dated March 25 of 2011, a copy is attached to your memo, placed three conditions of approval for this map, one of which is that the applicant's land surveyor must calculate the excess number of cubic yards of soil being removed from lot number two. Approximately 52.5 percent of the entire site is environmentally sensitive land containing steep slopes. Lot number two contains approximately 78.5 percent of steep slopes. The zoning ordinance restricts the development of environmentally sensitive lands. Therefore, in order for this subdivision to be approved, the applicant would be required to obtain variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals, to permit environmentally sensitive land with slopes in excess of 15 percent to be altered, to permit a structure within 10 feet of environmentally sensitive land, to reduce the minimum lot area for lot number two from 21,780 square feet, 44,650 square feet as proposed, to 7,909 square feet, and to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 25 percent to 44.3 percent due to environmentally sensitive land for a proposed 3,500-square-foot home. In comparison to the originally approved application in 1994, the revised application shows significantly more excavation, as shown on the attached illustration. Since there is a significant difference in the proposed elevations in comparison to the approved application of 1994, the Board may wish to consider making this application the subject of an onsite inspection. Pursuant to Section 322-19, the Planning Board may only grant variances for counting environmentally sensitive land as part of lot area. And pursuant to Section 322-19E, the Board of Zoning Appeals has the powers to consider these types of variances. According to Section 277-6 of Town Law, before the BZA can act, they have to receive a recommendation from the Planning Board in favor of granting the variances. Once the BZA renders a decision, this application is then referred back to the Planning Board for final subdivision approval. The Planning Department recommends that the Board make this application the subject of an onsite inspection. Should the Board wish to render a decision on the application this evening, the Planning Department has prepared a resolution for the Board's consideration.
Is there anyone here from the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Vincent Trumarko. I represent the applicant. I've submitted the affidavit of posting to Blaze. I know that you're going to have to send it over to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We certainly don't have an objection to it. That's the procedure. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application specifically? All right, let's have the, are you?
You can speak any which way you want. Go up to the mic.
What application are you talking on?
This is the one you were talking about.
That one? Okay.
Yeah, I live on Meadow Road. I live across the street from the back end of it.
Okay. Give your name and address.
Kenyon Hopkin. I live at 733 Meadow Road.
Kenyon?
Kenyon. K-E-N-Y-O-N. H-O-P-K-I-N. Something that wasn't mentioned is Caleb Smith Park is, the border is very close to that area. It's about 500 feet from where the, where the construction is going to be. And there's a lot of animals that go through there. They come onto my property that go through there, like foxes, deer, birds. Given the proximity of only about 500 feet from the border of Caleb Smith Park, a strong urge that the land remains untouched, this is a beautiful area rich with wildlife. Animals recently seen moving through there include foxes, deer, rare birds. I saw there was a pheasant on my property just the other day. And it's just a great area rich with wildlife, and I would hate to see it disturbed. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else? We have a recommendation there to do an onsite for this application. Members of the Board?
Yeah, I'd like to go say it.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a question. You have to go to the mic.
With your name and address, please. On this application?
Yes, on this application. My name is Priscilla Jordan, J-O-R-D-A-N. I also live at 733 Meadow. And I don't want to be repetitive, but I do agree with the previous speaker, Kenyon Hopkin. I just also wanted to inquire as to, I mean, it seems like the dates when you were discussing your information varied from 1994 to 2008, 2011. It was very confusing for me as a public citizen to understand that. And my inquiry is, does the New York State Department, the DEC, do they need to now get involved to reevaluate this? Or what does it mean when you do an onsite inspection?
What we do is we take the information that's been forwarded to us by the Planning Director.
By whom?
By the Planning Director.
Who's the Planning Director?
Mr. DeRubis.
Okay, thank you.
And if you have any questions there in the interim, what we do then is we take the information, we do an onsite, and then we review the application again, and then we make a vote. And at that time, you'll be notified of what the decision will be, okay? And you can get in touch with Mr. DeRubis or Mr. Donato, either one, okay?
My name is Ann Chaisson, C-H-A-I-S-S-O-N. I live at 575 Pulaski Road, Kings Park.
Oh, you're not in this neighborhood then?
No, but you didn't answer her question about the DEC, whether they have to renew it again.
It's all got to be reviewed, every bit of that.
Well, then why don't we have another meeting after we get there?
There will be another meeting.
Because you helped.
That's why we said we have to have an onsite first, and then we come back for another meeting there after we've had an onsite.
We have to go look at it.
We have to look at it.
It wasn't brought up until they had gotten the permission, but that was before these changes. Wouldn't it seem logical that you'd have to get another permission before bringing it up again?
All of that there will be handled by the Planning Director there at the time there that we bring it up again, okay?
It's very confusing.
There's nothing, everything is on the record, by the way. It's not only on the record with a stenographer, it's also on the record there on television. So everything you want to know about any application there is on the record for your review, okay?
Mr. Chairman, if I just may add, if there are people who are concerned, want to see the details of the DEC reviews, all they have to do is come down to the Planning Department and ask to see the files, and you can read all the documents that are in the file.
Did the last DEC review, did you know what it was?
No, they issued a DEC permit March 1 of this year for the current application.
And all that information is available at the Planning Department.
Okay.
All right, a motion for an onsite.
In the matter of Jason Estates, number 889B, I move that we adjourn the matter pending an onsite inspection by the Board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda that we will discuss under part three, item 12, number 2012-02, Carlson Associates.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we begin that particular hearing, for the audience, my name is Frank DeRobies. I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development for the town. I'd like to point out that there has been some misinformation with regard to this particular application, or these two applications. These applications are major applications, and they are serious applications, and they are changes of zones. There has been some discussion as to whether or not this relates to proposals for a power plant, and whether this zoning will help or hinder those particular applications. What I gave to the Board each, and is on your table, is a zoning chart, which contains a list of the approved uses in each of the zoning categories of the town. A power plant is classified under the town as a public utility facility, and is permitted in all but one zoning category of the town, and that is for parkland. This, what I'm trying to say is, in layman's terms, is that a power plant does not need a zone change in the town to be considered. It is an action that is before the town boards solely through a special exception permit process. Tonight's application is strictly a zone change application with regard to these properties, changing them from various categories of residential, light industry, to heavy industry. And we believe that the purpose of that is so that the applicant can attempt to legalize some of the existing uses that are there on that site. With that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn the meeting back over to Blaze.
The Planning Board will conduct a public hearing this evening, June 6, 2012, to consider the above referenced petition for a change of zone from R43 residential, single-family, and light industrial, to wholesale and service industry and heavy industry in order to bring the existing uses on the property into conformity. The site is an 84.63 acre parcel located north and east of Old Northport Road and west of the Sunken Meadow Parkway. Portions have been mined, and the topography is uneven. The applicants are requesting a change of zone from R43, 43,560 square feet, single-family residential, and light industrial to wholesale and service industry and heavy industry in order to bring the existing uses on the property into conformity. This is a request to amend the comprehensive plan. Zoning uses on the site and surrounding properties. The subject site is made up of 22 separate tax lots and parts of two additional tax lots held by multiple owners. The R43 zone portion has been zoned for single-family residential use since the inception of zoning in 1932. Most of the area west of Meadow Glen Road, an unpaved road, was rezoned for industrial use in 1946 under petition number 46-03, and the portion of that area now zoned HI, heavy industry, an out parcel from this petition, was rezoned to heavy industry in 1969 under petition number 69-11. According to the petitioner, there are multiple uses on the site, including contractors' yard, storage of trucks, construction equipment, boats, masonry supplies, sand, stone, fill, landscaping supplies, miscellaneous storage, nursery supply, including plants, trees, and shrubs, business offices, golf cart sales and rentals, and a single-family residence. The site also contains a New York State DEC permitted solid waste management facility receiving recognizable uncontaminated concrete, brick, asphalt, and asphalt pavement, rock or soil, wood, land clearing debris, yard waste, and animal manure and associated bedding material. The petition also includes a statement that the facility is not a compost facility. Composting is a permitted and very limited use at the facility, but represents less than one 3/65th of total activities, and that the facility does not bury compost. The statement includes a list of items not, excuse me, processed at the site, including tires, demolition debris, multiple solid waste, and hazardous waste. It should be noted that, in any zoning district, a composting facility is not a permitted use in the town of Smithtown. There is additional information about the uses at the site in the text below under the history and conditions heading. Because of the size of the subject property, a description of the zoning and uses of the surrounding properties is somewhat complex. To the west of the site across Old Northport Road are the town of Huntington and the Huntington Municipal Incinerator Facility. Southwest is, in the town of Smithtown, west of Old Northport Road, property zoned LI and used for contractors' yards and related uses, likely not in conformance with zoning. To the east of the site is the Sunken Meadow Parkway in R43 zoning. East of the Parkway, there are residences in R43 and RM7, two-family residential, 7,500 square feet per unit. South of the site is property zoned R43 and used for contractors and trucking yards and related uses not in conformance with zoning. To the north of the site is the Long Island Railroad, the Port Jefferson branch. North of the railroad is property zoned light industry, R21, and R10, some formerly sand mined, contrary to zoning, and uses include trucking station, vehicle repair, and single-family residences. There are several out parcels that are not included in this petition. Two of these lots, known as Suffolk County Tax Map numbers 23-2-11.2 and 23-3-22, are not included because the owners have not chosen to participate in making this change of zone request. These lots are mostly undeveloped. An additional lot, Suffolk County Tax Map number 23-2-5, and the balance of the two partial lots, Suffolk County Tax Map numbers 23-2 and part of 6.1 and part of 7.1, were not included in the petition by the petitioner because they are currently zoned heavy industry. A separate series of applications is being prepared by the owner to attempt to legalize current heavy industry uses on those lots. The history and conditions on the site. The western portion of the site, that is west of Meadow Glen Road, is the most developed portion of the site. It has been in some form of industrial zoning since 1946. However, the eastern portion of the site, east of Meadow Glen Road and currently zoned R43, remained mostly untouched until the late 1980s. Aerial photographs from 1980 through 2010 show a progressive increase in sand mining and other industrial activities in contravention of the zoning regulations. The uses on the eastern portion of the site, that being all of the uses in the R43 portion of the site, that have been identified by the petitioner are illegal, with the possible exception of the single-family house. The petitioner has characterized the uses as nonconforming. Nonconforming uses are those that were legal at the time they were initiated, but that are not permitted under current zoning because of a change in the zoning district or zoning regulations. As far as can be determined based on the information in the petition materials, none of the industrial or commercial uses are nonconforming. The petitioner has obtained a permit from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to process yard waste. The permit indicates that the permee is responsible for obtaining any other permits or approvals that may be required to carry out the activities that are authorized by this permit. A letter from the DEC is attached to your memorandum. The, sorry, the processing, the permit calls it grinding and debagging, is to take place within a building. The plans that were part of the permit application show the processing taking place on part of the site located west of Meadow Glen Road, and the resulting processed material being stored in the out-of-doors on the portion of the east side of Meadow Glen Road. While there may be technical distinctions between the work approved in the DEC permit and the operation of a composting facility, the facility processes organic material that will then be stored in the out-of-doors on the site and may be stored for up to three years. Those stored materials will undergo the biological breakdown commonly known as composting. This can result in odors, dust, leaching into the groundwater, or other effects associated with composting. Issues for the Board's consideration. There are a number of issues for the Board to consider in evaluating this petition. This is a request for a major amendment to the town's comprehensive plan because the request is to change the zoning of a very large area from the least intensive zoning to the most intensive. This request has the potential to set precedent for similar rezonings that could further increase the total acreage for heavy industry. The scale of this request and its potential for setting precedent could have an impact on the tax base because heavy industrial land has the lowest average tax assessment of all industrial or business uses. This request would encourage the continuation and expansion of uses that neighboring residents have found to be obnoxious. This request could encourage an increase in heavy truck traffic on a roadway system that is not designed for and does not have the capacity for such an increase. This request has the potential to encourage further disorderly development in an area that has developed to date without regard to the need to integrate necessary uses appropriately in the town's residential character and physical infrastructure. Unless the zoning ordinance is amended, the requested zoning categories would permit only some of the proposed current uses. The wholesale service industry category is not appropriate for this area. Given the range and complexity of these issues and the large size of the subject property, an extensive environmental review will be necessary, and a positive secret declaration is likely. This is a request for a major amendment to the town's comprehensive plan because the request is to change the zoning of a very large area from the least intensive zoning to the most intensive zoning. If granted, the petition would result in a significant alteration to the town zoning pattern. Much of the site would be going from the R43 category, that is, a zoning district that permits only the most restricted development, to heavy industry, that is, a zoning district that permits the most intense development. At present, there are approximately 78 acres of heavy industry zoned property in the town. The subject site is approximately 84.63 acres, and the request, the request is for approximately 74 acres to be changed to heavy industry. So this is a request to almost double the number of acres zoned for heavy industry townwide. This request has the potential to set precedent for similar rezonings that could further increase the total acreage for heavy industry. There are other properties along Old Northport Road, especially on the south side of Old Northport Road, that are also out of compliance with their zoning, but used for heavy industrial activities. Approval of the petition could set a precedent for additional rezonings of the same scale, that is, about 74 more acres, as this petition. It is important to consider how much heavy industry zoning is needed throughout the town, and whether the long-term needs of the town would be met by this zoning in this area. The scale of this request and its potential for setting precedent could have an impact on the tax base because heavy industrial land and the lowest tax, the lowest average tax assessment of all industrial or business uses. And considering how much land in any zoning category is needed townwide, assessed value of property in the various zoning categories is an important component of the analysis. Undeveloped and underdeveloped land should be considered in terms of its potential value to the tax base and to the economic health of the town. The total assessed value of all the property currently zoned heavy industry is $201,605, with the average assessed value per acre being $2,594, based on 2009 figures. Compare this to the $5,825 average value of an acre of light industry zoned property that is not in the Hop Hog Industrial Park, or to the $15,461 average value of properties within the park, and it is clear that heavy industry uses have a much lower value to the town tax base. This is because heavy industry uses take place, for the most part, out-of-doors and do not require the construction of buildings or other property improvements. Since taxes are based on the extent of development of the property, heavy industry uses are closer to undeveloped land for tax assessment purposes. This request would encourage the continuation and expansion of uses that neighboring residents have found to be obnoxious. have found to be obnoxious. The site is in close proximity to residential development on the east and north, separated on the east by the Sunken Meadow State Parkway and on the north by the Long Island Railroad. Despite the distance and physical buffers provided by the Parkway and the railroad, residents of these neighborhoods have complained about negative impacts from the activities on the subject site. Residents on the east side of the Sunken Meadow Parkway have been experiencing noise and odors emanating from the property. Residents, especially those whose neighborhoods connect to Old Northport Road, have complained about the truck traffic on that road with its attendant noise, dirt, speed, and safety issues. An important factor in considering this issue is that there are physical buffers in place already at the east, the Sunken Meadow Parkway, and north, the Long Island Railroad boundaries of the site, but these physical barriers have not been sufficient to fully mitigate the negative effects of this level of industrial activity. This request could encourage an increase in heavy truck traffic on a roadway system that is not designed for and does not have the capacity for such an increase. The roadway providing access to the site is Old Northport Road. While it was reconstructed in 1977 to carry heavy truck traffic, Town Line Road and many of the surrounding roads were not designed for this purpose. This request has the potential to encourage further disorderly development in an area that has developed to date without regard to the need to integrate necessary uses appropriately in the town's residential character and physical infrastructure. As discussed above, the uses on the site are not legal, and there is a pattern of development that does not follow the town code or other good development guidelines. For several decades, there have been activity on parts of the site that have been contrary to the zoning and carried out without site plan or other approvals or oversight by the town. It is unclear what specific activities have taken place, what has been excavated or buried, what is currently being stored, and despite a listing of current activities in the petition, we are not certain that all of the activities are described. For example, recent observations made from the perimeters of the site suggest that very large quantities of material are being processed, packaged, and stored. It is not clear what that material is or whether this activity is included in the activities described in the petition. Insofar as there are many current violations of the zoning ordinance on the subject site, it is not clear what safeguards could be put in place to ensure that the requested HI zoning adopted for such a large and secluded area would not encourage more development without benefit of town permits and appropriate public oversight. Unless the zoning ordinance is amended, the requested zoning categories would permit only some of the proposed current uses. The storage of compost material, that is, the product of the yard waste processing facility, is not a permitted use according to the town code. The golf cart sales and rentals and the nursery supply would not be permitted in the HI zoning, and it is not clear where on the site these uses are located. There may be other uses that the petitioners operate or propose that would not be permitted in the requested zoning districts. The WSI category is not appropriate for this area. The wholesale and service industry zoning category is described in the town code as, intended to provide adequate land along appropriate arterial highways for automotive-related, non-retail needs and for uses which require extensive land for outdoor storage or display and for uses that do not generate large traffic volumes. The subject location is not on an arterial roadway, and the section of the site for which the WSI zoning is requested is not on any roadway. The petitioner did not identify what uses are proposed for this portion of the site, so there is not enough information provided to evaluate how the site would meet the purposes of this zoning district. Given the range and complexity of these issues and the large size of the subject property, an extensive environmental review will be necessary and a positive secret declaration is likely. The above action appears to meet most of the standards for a Type I action that would likely require an environmental impact statement. Petitions for several smaller parcels in this area have received a positive declaration, and the town's initiative to permit limited heavy industrial uses by special exception was also treated the same way. The town board could deny but cannot approve the petition unless that process is complete. Pursuant to the requirements of Section A 14-14 to 23 of the Suffolk County Administrative Code, the Suffolk County Planning Commission reviewed and approved this petition with the following comments. One, the out parcel in the residential district may be a future source of conflict. The town board may consider changing the district designation of this site on its own motion to, one, more consistent with the desired zoning pattern of the surrounding parcels. Two, the town and the applicant should consider stormwater runoff management treatment, particularly in the future as new uses are proposed under the new zoning districts. Stormwater drainage should be contained on-site, and the applicants should agree to incorporate non-point source pollution mitigation into the overall drainage plan by incorporating, for example, one or more of the following stormwater mitigation techniques. Natural retention areas such as vegetated swales and bioretention cells and rain gardens, permeable porous pavement surfaces, manufactured treatment devices such as catch basins inserted designed to filter hydrocarbons and other pollutants from stormwater runoff. The petitioners may find some benefit in reviewing the contents of the Suffolk County Planning Commission Guidebook related to stormwater treatment and the Suffolk County Planning Commission publication managing storm, storm natural vegetation and green methodologies found on the commission website. Three, opportunities exist to preserve existing natural vegetation on-site and add to it in the form of open space and buffers as a result of future site planning. Four, the proposed zoning district boundaries should be drawn to attempt to coincide better with existing property lines. The proposed zoning district boundaries tend to split certain parcels and thereby set up zoning interpretation issues and potential future subdivision of parcels. The town may want to study the issues of noise, light, and safety prior to accepting conceptual site plans for zoning violation remedies. It is the belief of the Suffolk County Planning Commission that the proposal may find some benefit in reviewing the commission's guidebook, particularly with respect of public safety. Six, it is not clear from the referred materials if the petitioners have given detailed consideration to energy efficiency. While some aspects of the use on the subject property relate to resource recovery and sustainability, the proposers may find some benefit in reviewing the commission's guidebook with respect to energy efficiency, particularly as it may relate to future development of the rezoned property. The heavy industry zoning regulations are intended to provide appropriate locations for safe and efficient heavy industrial activities necessary to serve the needs of the community. The regulations do not address what types of locations are appropriate for heavy industry uses, but the town has generally tried to segregate and buffer residential areas from these uses because of the high potential for heavy industry to produce noise, odor vibrations, dust, heavy truck traffic, and other obnoxious effects. In an attempt to control the current heavy industrial uses, the town considered amending the zoning ordinance to permit a limited amount of heavy industrial uses through a special exception process that is attached to your memorandum. Although a public hearing was held to consider this proposal, the amendment was recommended to be classified as a Type I action, requiring an environmental impact statement. Since the public hearing, no action on this amendment has been undertaken. Given the size of the property and the complexity and number of issues involved, the planning department does not believe that this matter could be decided without the analysis provided by an environmental impact statement. Based on the considerations above, the planning department recommends that the planning board reserve its recommendation until completion of the secret process. Additionally, the Huntington Town Clerk was notified of this public hearing by letter dated May 21, 2012. Since such notified municipalities have forty-five days in which to comment, we recommend that the board adjourn the hearing rather than close it to permit additional time should the town of Huntington wish to comment.
That concludes the planning department's comments. Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicants. I would like to just clear up a matter. As you know, Mr. Chairman, my office wrote a letter to you, to your counsel, Mr. Shul, and to Frank Derubius requesting that this hearing be adjourned specifically because the town of Huntington has not given their written comments. Obviously, you want to continue with the hearing tonight, and that's your call, but I'd like, for the record, I'm going to submit these two letters and also ask you that, once those comments come in from Huntington, that you give us time to digest them. In the letter, we asked for forty-five days, and then you call the hearing, recall the public hearing so that my clients have an opportunity to address them as well as the audience. I think that's your intention, I just, I'm not sure.
Yes, that is.
Okay. I'll just submit these, just for the record. They are the two letters that were submitted to Mr. Shul.
We couldn't really adjourn this meeting, Mr. Tramarko, with the notice that we were given. That notice was yesterday, and these people have been on record there since whenever you posted the property, and impossible to stop people there from coming to a meeting.
Well...
And that's the reason there that I elected to do what I did.
Okay. The other concern that we have is, apparently, according to the P.A.R., the notice was sent to the town of Huntington on May 21. This application has been in for, I don't know how long, I don't know why it was sent out on the 21st. Obviously, if it was sent out, you know, a month or two before, we might not be talking about this right now. Be that as it may...
Did you send that application, or did somebody, did Mr. Derubius?
We sent it out. Mr. Chairman, I would just note that when an application is received from the town clerk, they send the notification about the application to the town of Huntington, so that was submitted within days of when Mr. Tramarko submitted his application. What we submitted to the town of Huntington was notice of a public hearing on this particular matter, which came to our attention that they were unaware of the fact of when the hearing date would be scheduled, but they were noticed within days of the application being submitted.
But when was, when was the application made for this, by Mr. Tramarko? What day?
Okay, hold on.
What month?
Give me a second.
So why wasn't a request put in to the town of Huntington? In the past, when we did the Crooked Hill application, you notified the town of Huntington well in advance of the hearing in order for them to be able to make a commitment there to whether they wanted to make any kind of a statement. And as I remember it, I was on the board at the time, why wasn't the same step taken now?
The same step was taken. The applicant, when this application, it comes in before the town clerk, this is not an application that comes before us. When the town clerk receives this application, as part of the review process, Huntington gets automatically notified of the application. In other words, they were notified in March of this particular application, so... As well as through the Suffolk County Planning Commission, they were notified of this. What they were not notified of is the scheduling of this public hearing. That's the only thing that they didn't know about. And so what we were saying as a courtesy to the town of Huntington, because they may have wanted to attend this meeting or make a presentation, we allowed them the same notification, but they have had this application since March.
But why, why didn't your office then ask for a response, like, so that Mr. Tramarko and his clients would be able there to have addressed that issue long before we had this That's what you did there for the Crooked Hill property?
We would normally expect when Huntington receives an application, just as we receive an application, it's not, we expect them to comment on the application. What we are basically stating when we're talking about Huntington not being notified about the public hearing is that maybe Huntington would want to be at the public hearing is the only thing. But as far as an opportunity for Huntington to submit comments, they've had since March to submit comments.
And there were no comments from them?
And there were no comments from the town of Huntington. They were also notified via the Suffolk County Planning Commission of this particular act. In other words, the, what Blaze read into the record was also given by the Suffolk County Planning Commission to the town of Huntington with regard to this particular application.
Know when that was?
Hold on. Hold on. When's Suffolk County?
Please, please, all of this is being recorded. Everybody will have an opportunity to talk that wants to talk.
March 27 is when...
Please.
We have all the people here tonight. Is there any reason why the people who ever say it tonight and speak on this, the matter can be adjourned? If Huntington wants to give comments, as it's noted, they've requested an adjournment, they can give comments, he can respond to them, and then the hearing, since it's adjourned or concluded, will come on again, and he can address those comments. Anybody else who wants to come back again can speak again.
You could do, the board certainly could do whatever they want. What we're basically saying here is the town of Huntington was notified when this application was submitted. They were again notified at the end of March by Suffolk County Planning Commission with their recommendations, and then we notified the town of Huntington again on May 21 of this meeting, so...
Excuse me, please. Please, you can't there, if you speak out, we don't know who you are or anything else. You will have plenty of opportunity before this night is over to come up to the microphone, say who you are and why, what your, what your comments are, all right?
The only thing that I believe that is of significance here is when we receive a zone change from the town of Huntington, okay, we respond immediately with our comments, either having comments or whatever. We do not normally attend their public hearing. What we are trying to say here is that we are giving Huntington the courtesy of attending a public hearing. That's all we are doing. They have had this application since March. They've had adequate time and more than the required time by state law for them to review it.
Right.
So I believe we could go on. If they haven't commented by now...
Okay.
I don't think it's, you know, you know, maybe...
So has the statute been satisfied? The forty-five days, they've had notice since March, right?
That's correct.
So...
But then they're supposed to be notified of any meetings that occur as well. So in other words, they are notified of the application, and they're also supposed to be notified of the meetings. So they may submit applications, but we've fulfilled all the legal requirements with regard to notification.
Are we mandated to wait for the town of Huntington?
No.
The forty-five day notice is required for comment, not in advance of the meeting.
That's correct, but we are required to notify them of the meeting, and we are giving them forty-five days.
Should I clear that up for you, Mr. Tramarko?
I think so.
Yes, I'll agree.
Maybe the answer is we don't give any regard to Huntington's comments because Huntington did not comment, and I don't believe anybody from Huntington is here tonight, so that's another alternative. From the, the official from the town of Huntington? Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Proceed with your...
This really started about five or six years ago when I was retained and, by my clients, to discuss how we're going to go about making and having some stability with all of the businesses that are currently being conducted in this particular area. And one of the things that we did was meet with Frank Derubius on more than one occasion... And one of the things that we did was meet with Frank Derubias on more than one occasion to try and come up with some sort of a way to give the businesses in the community stability as well as giving the residents security in what's to go on with respect to this whole area. So there were meetings, and there were meetings, and Frank Derubias came up with what he calls an overlay district. We looked at it, we weren't completely happy with it. Ultimately, it went to the town board, as was said in Frank's planning advisory report. And there it stays, at the town board, no decision, and God knows when there will be a decision. One of the things that we're frustrated about, the same as I'm sure the residents are frustrated about, is there is no finality to this. It keeps going on and on and on. And because of that, we made the application to go from light industry and W S I to heavy industry. We had no choice but to do that because everything else seemed to have failed, and I'm not saying it's anybody's particular fault, but here we are, we're at a meeting tonight, the only way that I can give some security to my clients is to go with the heavy industry category because that's all there is. Light industry doesn't permit outside storage. Of course, Mr. Derubias tried to work that out with a special exception and a whole bunch of things which, in some cases, made a lot of sense, in other cases, we didn't necessarily agree, but it was a step forward. But it's not a step forward anymore. I think we're going 10 steps backwards because the town board, for whatever their reasons are, hasn't voted on that, on the presentation before them. So it's not only the residents that are frustrated, we're also frustrated. We don't want to go on this way. We don't want to have situations where the residents are upset with us, nor do we want to be in a position where we don't know where we're going with our businesses. There has to be finality to it. Every town in Suffolk County and Nassau County has areas, have areas which are heavy industry use types. They may not call it heavy industry, they may call it some other category, but they have those uses. And the reason why they have those uses is, somewhere in a township, you need to have bulldozers, heavy equipment, all of the things that make for the heavy industry-type businesses. You need that, you need it in every town.
Excuse me, wait just a minute. If you're going to interrupt here, I'm going to ask Public Safety to escort whoever interrupts out of the hall. We're not going to have chaos in here tonight. Is that fair? All right. Continue, Mr. Tramaco.
Thank you. So, again, I wouldn't want anybody in the audience to think that we didn't try. We did try, it could be verified by Frank Derubias, the meetings that we had, to try and work this out. Some of the people from the civics are aware of it, but we didn't get anywhere, and it's not because we didn't try. So here we are tonight, the only recourse we have is to ask for heavy industry. The next point that I'd like to make is, many of the statements in the planning advisory report, the report that Blaze read from cover to cover, are merely allegations. They are not facts. They're allegations of the planning department, many of which are not factually true. I'm not saying they did it on purpose, maybe they're misinformed. Most, if not all, no, I should say all, of my clients are non-conforming users. They have to be non-conforming users because they're either in light industry or they're in residential zones, and obviously, you're not allowed to have outside storage in light industry, and you're sure as heck not allowed to have any type of equipment, storage, or anything else in the most restrictive zone, residential zone, which is R-43. So my clients are non-conforming users. So if they're non-conforming users, why would they want to come here and ask for a change of zone? Well, they're non-conforming users only for the particular use that they have right now, whether it's rock crushing, whether it's storage of heavy equipment. Those things are permitted under the law because they are non-conforming. We want some finality to what we can do as far as in the future. So if we don't want to be a rock-crushing plant anymore, and we would like to sell the business or convert the business to something else, we would like to know what we could do with our property. So it's the kind of thing that really came out of frustration, not because we were looking to put something over on anybody. We've had businesses there for upwards of 60, 70 years. In a moment, I'm going to ask Hank Carlson to give a little history of the area, and who better than him would know, since as a little boy, he was in the Carlson precast family and precast business. So in an effort to at least let the audience know, we tried, we want to work together, we still want to work together with the residents. On the other hand, we're just not going to pick up our marbles and leave because we have a right to be where we are. So, and another, finally, I'd just like to, there was a newspaper article today in Newsday by Carl McGowan, and at the end of the article, Edward Wareheim, one of the councilmen, suggests that he wasn't sure if the town could deal with this on his own, on its own, and maybe a consultant should be hired. Well, I don't know if a consultant should be hired, that's not my place, it's certainly the town board to figure out what's to go on with these properties. So I believe it's the town board's responsibility to move forward with this, whether it be a consultant or whether they sit down and listen to Mr. Wareheim and move forward with it. The other thing, and finally, we talk about a master plan. This doesn't conform to the master plan. The master plan is older than I am. I don't understand why this master plan hasn't been revised, remodeled, and reworked, and it should be an ongoing type of situation. So you're not stuck with a master plan that maybe was done in the 1950s, and the master plan says that along Old Northport Road, there should be R-43 residential houses, when we all know that's not the case and never will be the case. So we all have to look at this and think about, what's the best way to go about it without, obviously, hurting the residents, and they're concerned, and rightly so, but so are my clients concerned about how they're going to do business in the future. Don't forget, most of them have been there 50, 60, 70 years, so, and they've operated their businesses without too much bother from the town. I dare say that every time, or most of the time, no, every time the town came in and gave summonses, ultimately, we were, not me personally, but they were successful in the local courts with respect to whether they were non-conforming users or not. Given all of that, we still want to work something out with the residents, with this board, and with the town board, so it's good for everybody. We're not going to go away, and I know the residents aren't going to go away. So what we really need to do is try and put our heads together and work this out. As we tried, and Frank can tell you, we had multiple meetings, and we really tried to work it out, but it didn't work so far, anyway. So with that, I would like to call Hank Carlson, who, as I said, has been, I guess, a lifelong resident of Kings Park and one of the founders of Carlson Precast.
My name is Henry V. Carlson. My legal address is 248 Landing Avenue, Smithtown, New York. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, members of the planning department, friends and neighbors. I'm happy to be here tonight. I'm happy to speak on behalf of this application, but not so much this application in particular...
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Would you address, please, the board?
Yes.
And that way, they can hear everything, the speakers are here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. On behalf of finding, really, a rational solution to the needs of our community. As a community, we're sort of like a man wearing burlap underwear. It covers our vital parts. We think it would be unseemly to display our private parts in public, but we dare not get rid of our private parts lest we die of toxemia. Our underwear protects our outer garments from the risk of getting soiled. Now, the point I'm making here is that the industries located on Old Northport Road and in that area are like our private parts. We don't want them displayed in public. We want them clean and generally hidden from view. We don't want to smell any odors that might escape from them. We want to be sure that any noxious or toxic substances that are emitted by them are disposed of in a way that does not contaminate us or our environment. All that being said, we know that we cannot get rid of these industries anymore than we can get rid of the private parts of our physical bodies. I would submit to you that there are some who loathe the private parts of their bodies. These persons are sick, and we should have sympathy for them and feel badly for them. All these things, I think, we can agree on...
Please, everybody's going to have your chance.
But relative...
Please.
Relative to our physical bodies, we have a choice as to the kind of underwear we And most of us would choose cotton, or rayon, or silk, or some, something that's comfortable. We would not choose burlap. And what I'm getting at here is that none of us in our community are comfortable, and the reason we're not comfortable is the underwear that's being imposed or superimposed upon us is a zoning code that just is totally unrealistic relative to this area. This area is, is now, and has been, used for two primary uses. One is municipal waste. That's what made it an area that was considered undesirable. And after the town dumps, we're located in that area many, many, many years ago. The town planning directors asked those of us who had businesses that were considered of a nature not to be suitable, really, or most desirable in the middle of a town or in the middle of a residential area, they directed us down to this area. It made a lot of sense, but what industries are there? All the industries that are down there are really construction-related industries. Apart from the municipal waste facilities, they're all construction-related industries. We don't have any such thing as heavy industry on Long Island anymore. We don't have steel mills, we don't have rubber factories, we don't have chemical plants, we don't have aircraft manufacturing plants, we don't have stamping mills, we don't have foundries, we don't have any of these things on Long Island. But we have a code that says heavy industry, and it's the only part in the code that allows for outside storage. That and wholesale industry, and the planning director has just told us that wholesale industry is not suitable for our area. Then what is suitable? Heavy industry is not suitable, and wholesale industry is not suitable, and residential is not suitable, and light industry is not suitable. So there is nothing suitable. There is no, nothing suitable for the construction industry, and yet we have been here in the town longer than anybody else. Because you can't have anything in the town if you don't have construction and a construction industry. So the problem that we're dealing with is that we're all being forced, the citizens in the community and us, we're being forced to wear burlap underwear. We're being forced to wear something that just does not fit, and none of us can be comfortable in it. And we need an amendment to the code that makes rational sense. Because we are legitimate businesses, we have been here as long as the town has been here. I've been, I'm 73 years old, I grew up in Kings Park, I spent my life here working in business. My father was born in Kings Park, he grew up here and worked his lifetime in the business, construction-related business. His father came here as a 14-year-old boy, immigrated from Sweden, and settled here in the year that, around the year that the railroads came here. It was all rural farmland. We've stayed here, and he was in that business, my father was in that business, my family has been in that business, my son is in that business. None of your homes would be built without, out of that kind of industry. None of our businesses would exist without this kind of industry. Nobody would take care of our trash and our garbage and all the other things that we'd rather not look at every day if we don't have a place to take care of them. We're here. We've been here for a long time. And so what we need is a revision to the code that allows us to be here and recognizes our legitimacy and the legitimacy of our functions. There will be no solution as long as we continue to play this dance that's been going on for 50 years, where we're cited for some kind of summons, with some kind of summons, our whole passel of summonses, and we go down and we talk to people, and they, we hire a lawyer, and we go down and we talk to the people at court, and they say, the way you have to solve this is, you're being summoned because you're not in conformance with the code. And we say, well, what should we do? Well, they say, you need to, you need to go down to the planning department, talk to them, make an application, and submit it, and get in conformance with the code. And so we go through that dance, and we go down to the planning department, and they, and we sit with the planning director, and he tells us, well, you should do this, you should do that, our code says this, we only have this, you can only apply under this category. And so we go and apply under this category, but this category doesn't fit us. And this category gets all of our neighbors all upset because it's a blanket, heavy industry, oh, who knows what that's going, we're going to have a rubber plant in our neighborhood next. So this is really the problem that we're all dealing with. We're not going to go away. Our neighbors are not going to go away. We don't want to be a problem to our neighbors. They don't want us to be a problem to them, and I don't think they want to be a problem to us. But they don't want to have to look at us, they want things to be handled reasonably and sensibly, but they don't want us to blanket heavy industry, the area. We need a zoning code revision or amendment, at least to cover our area, that allows us to do construction-related industries with outside storage, the very uses that we have, and it recognizes us and those uses. Now, I could go into a whole lot of stories, but I don't think that's necessary. I think I've made the point that I wanted to make. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. I would now like to call Toby Carlson, just to give a few remarks with respect to his operation, who is run by Toby.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the board, planning director, concerned citizens. My name is Toby Carlson. My address is 140 Old Northport Road, Kings Park, New York, 11750...54. I represent East, West and Central Development Partners, or Carlson. I'm 35 years old. I employ 60 people. I do business with 400 local Suffolk and Nassau County customers. I eat my lunch at Anderson's Deli. I sponsor the local football team, but what I'm most proud of is that I'm a new father to a beautiful baby girl. We are here about our proposed rezoning. And I'll go back in time. Forty-five years ago, in April of 1967, the town board mented and considered a change of zone to our site on Old Northport Road. At that time, our operation was on Main Street in Kings Park. Supervisor Klein made a statement at that time. He said, "The entire area which is subject to the change of zone is in need of a comprehensive analysis from zoning and planning standpoints, and to grant the change would render any such study totally academic, committing the area to HI use." In that same hearing, Councilman Brady stated, "The change of zone is important for the welfare of Kings Park, moving the Carlson operation from the most congested area of Kings Park to the extreme west end of town near the incinerator and town dump," which he said is a blighted area. Councilman Brady argued that the Carlson operation should be permitted to move from the village to this remote area, thereby allowing it to have the room to expand and provide more employment. The Carlson land in the Kings Park Village could then be acquired by the town for much needed parking space. Also in the area at that time where they recommended the move were several sand and gravel mining and screening operations, the Farino asphalt plan, and contractors' equipment yards with repair shops and offices. They were not particularly pretty, but they were either pre-existing uses or operating in that area because it is the area to which the town planning director had directed them. Make no mistake, while not pretty, these operations were and are legitimate and necessary to the community. I don't think there's anybody in this room that doesn't have a lawn mower, doesn't have...doesn't use a landscaper, doesn't put mulch around their yard, doesn't have a cesspool, doesn't have a contractor that they call up when something breaks. Well, we all exist on Old Northport Road. Regarding our rezoning operation...rezoning application, the subject property is mixed heavy industry, light industry and residential zoning. It is buffered...well, we already talked about the buffers, the railroad, the Parkway, the Huntington landfill. The goal of the rezoning application is to bring our operation to conformance with the town code. Heavy industry and WSI are the only zoning categories that currently permit outside storage, and therefore the planning director recommended that we apply as we have. We delayed our application at the request of the planning director and the civic associations to see what outcome would be of the planning director's initiated overlay district proposal. The overlay district was one way to approach the subject and had a lot of merit. For some undisclosed reason, the plan had gone nowhere. Light industrial is a viable alternative to heavy industrial. As far as owners of the properties are concerned, the LI category could be redefined to allow for outside storage or construction-related industries. This small change would resolve a lot of the problems for the entire area. This would require a modification to the existing town land use code. This application, again, has nothing to do with citing a location for a power plant. Power plants fall under Article 10 of the state code, which supersedes any local zoning codes. An important key to increasing the tax base in Kings Park industrial area is to have a uniform and rational zoning code. Once a zoning code is established, businesses will invest money and create jobs. But this will only happen in an area that has a clear, defined land use objective. When businesses invest in the area, they will increase the tax base and bring more jobs. To improve any area that has been considered blighted, you will need a healthy business environment. When an economy improves and people are doing well, one of the first things that we do is improve the appearance of our homes. The same thing is true for our commercial businesses. For the past 30 years, it has been extremely difficult for any business in the industrial area to obtain town approvals. Since our zoning and site plans were approved in 1969, I can name only two other non-municipal site plans in the area that have received approval. Haran changed the zoning from residential to heavy industrial after 15 years, I believe, of litigation. Tony LaTiri received permits to have a transfer station on light industrial land on Lawrence Road. Those are the only two that I can recollect. The owners on Old Northport Road would be very happy to redirect our truck traffic away from Town Line Road. We don't want to...we do not, I do not, want to negatively impact anybody on that road. Addressing some of the issues. We have had no DEC violations since...all of our outstanding violations were resolved in 2000. As a permit condition, we currently have a New York State DEC environmental monitor on-site between two and three days per week. There is also a full-time New York State DEC monitor at Huntington Incinerator that is available to validate odor, noise or dust complaints at any time.
Listen, I've said it once before. If you want to have an opportunity to talk, you'll have it, but I want no kibbiting here. If it is, then I'm gonna ask the public safety to escort you out of the room. Excuse me. You're gonna have all of the time. We've got all night in here. This is...this is the applicant. Go ahead, finish your...
Whenever there have been odor, dust, noise or issues in the past related to our facilities, those issues have been resolved properly and have willingly complied with and implied in all rules, old and new, imposed by the DEC. DEC maintains the logs of complaints, which I have for you. This year, there have been seven complaints so far for the area. That includes one from Comac and one from west of Town Line Road and five from the general area. Their procedure is to log all complaints at any point in time anyone can make a complaint. The DEC not only logs a complaint, but they come to the area to validate the complaint. And if the complaint has merit, they take enforcement action at the appropriate facility. The planning doc...the planning director in his comments in his planning advisory reports makes a reference, the part about material storage stating that storage time is three years. That's absolutely incorrect. This is complete...the material storage time for organic material at our site is maximum of nine months, between six and nine months. We take all residents' concerns, complaints and issues to heart. We also do our own monitoring of the local area for dust, noise and odor. Since January 1 of 2012, representative from our facility has driven through the areas adjacent to our facility three times per day to keep track of anything of the nature which might negatively impact on the local community. Our facility is not the only facility in the area that handles yard waste. The town of Smithtown handles yard waste at their facility. Other landowners also have yard waste handling facilities. Contrary to the opinion of some, the wind does not always blow from the Carlson site. This can be verified simply by watching the Weather Channel. A resident, Laura Schaefer, was quoted by Newsday, "People get sick from the smell." Since January 1, there have been seven complaints in Kings Park area made to the New York State DEC. People are getting sick, there would be more than seven complaints. There would be hundreds. The DEC would immediately start an enforcement action and stop the generator. The industrial landowners want and desire a zone change that acknowledges their legitimate businesses and will willingly live within reasonable parameters. Our town has considered an overlay district as one way of approaching the problem, but has shelved that approach for the time being. Our civic associations want to see the area continue to improve and be economically viable without jeopardizing public health. Our society, people in our communities, need to have the functions which we perform for them maintained and enhanced. Our young people need jobs. We have three choices. We can do nothing for another 40 years. Maybe my daughter will have better luck resolving the issues with the town. We can litigate and do that for another 20, 30 years. Or we can settle and make a compromise. Come up with a zoning category that is suitable for the area, HI, LI or WSI or some other variation that will meet the needs of the businesses. Have the zoning be subject to submission of a site plan. So site plans must have the proper safeguards to protect the community and the environment before approval. If you do this, landowners will rush in to get site plans and get approvals, thus bringing the properties into conformance with the town code. For me, this hearing is not about changing our zoning to HI. It is more about bringing awareness that we need to do something. We can't just kick the can down the road for the next generation to handle. We can choose to blame each other for causing the problem, but clearly, according to town board in 1967, the problem existed since before most of us could vote or form an opinion. We just need to look in the mirror and realize that we are all part of the problem, and only together can we become part of the solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. I'd just like to say, in conclusion, the board could do a number of things. One, recommend an aisle to the town board, recommend approval, or come up with a plan. That's what you...this board is. It's the planning board. So you can come up with a plan with the help of your planning department and the input of the residents and my clients. A third type of recommendation, which might encompass certainly our needs and the needs of the residents. So it's not either/or. It's whatever this board thinks is recommendable to the town board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, let me just have some order for speaking. If there's somebody speaking for a group, I would appreciate it if they would come forward, say who they're with, and then make your statement. Okay. Ladies first?
Right.
Okay. Give your name, your address and who you're representing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the members of the board. My name is Sherry Kaplan. I live at 56 Peppermint Road, Comac, New York, just on the other side of the Leith Aisment. I am a member of Town Line Association and have been a proud member for many years, which is composed of both residents from Huntington and Smithtown. And many of our members are here tonight despite the fact that we didn't get notice of this hearing at all. So the first thing I'm asking for the board is that this hearing be adjourned so that our council...we're in the process of hiring counsel, and I was on the phone with the counsel today, who is out of state, and I ask that this hearing be adjourned so that our counsel can come in and make a presentation to you, along with whatever may come from Huntington and any other members of other community advocates, so that everything can be considered and not just everything being heard tonight. I would ask that either the hearing be adjourned or that it be continued and held open so that everybody can comment fairly, because to be quite honest, although Mr. Trumaco has said he wants to work together with the residents, we got no notification. And yet, look how filled this room is tonight. We all somehow managed to get here without knowing what was going on.
All I...all I can respond to, and that is, the property was properly posted according there to the town regulations. Okay? Because I saw it. I made it a pearl...I made it a point to go and view the posting. Okay?
I did too, Mr. Chairman.
And I know that everybody doesn't go by the site all the time, but it was properly posted according to town regulations.
Just if you could just point for clarification, how many days' notice do they have to put signs up for us to know about it?
Five.
Respectfully, I would ask that perhaps that could be extended, because like you said, nobody drives over there unless somebody knows about it, and it was only after someone told me that I, and I live very close, took the time to drive over and see the sign. So I would ask that maybe in the future, better notification go out, because if we are gonna work together, how are we gonna know what's going on? It feels like everything is being a little hoodwinked, like we do not know what's going on, and it's trying to come in on the side. That being said, what we've suggested is that there are a couple of members, we're not gonna overlap, that would like to speak about different areas having to do with the application tonight. But clearly, without question, and the board has said this themselves, we need an extensive environmental impact study. This area is surrounded by homes. Not just my home, not just their homes, but homes in Huntington and Smithtown.
Please, you know, it distracts her from the speaker talking there and being able to present to us. We have to take the information that's presented to us and then make a decision of how to refer that to the town board or not. Okay? And when you're clapping, it doesn't do anything any more than any...you know, if you just let the person speak and give what the information that they want to do, it'll go much smoother. All right?
May I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. My understanding is that right now what's going on in the properties in question is that there's maybe a legal non-conforming use in a sense, which means that they can do what they're doing right now, but they can't expand, and they can't change, and they can't bring in any other industries. But my understanding is that if they get their grant and they change the zoning, then not just them, but other asphalt companies, we now open up the floodgates, as was mentioned in the report. And that's something that needs to be seriously considered because of all the environmental impacts based upon this type-on action dealing with more than 25 acres of this land, very close to schools, very close to hospitals, very close to large communities. They spoke about giving residents security and stability, and they said, "Well, what rights are there for the businesses?" Their right is to work and function under the conformance of the zoning that's there. And I don't see why we want to reward someone who's been there for years and years and years in a non-conforming use. And that seems to be where this process is going. So we respectfully request that you keep this hearing open, and what I'd like to do now is I'd like to turn my part over to three other Town Line Association members, Mr. Mark Seratoff, Mr. Tony Haberman and Ms. Ann Guglione. I'm sorry, Ann, I'm never gonna get your name right. And they will comment on other aspects about this, but again, I would ask respectfully that this hearing be held open so that our legal counsel, who also did not know about the hearing, can come, and he's also within the area, and he's a Kings Park resident, that he can come and speak as well, and that we can also then review what Huntington has to say, if they have something to comment on, so we can be fully aware and informed and make intelligent comments to be considered by the board. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark? My name is Mark Seratoff of 10 Coconut. I'm the science, technology person of Town Line Association. We represent over 11,000 families in the Comac, Kings Park, Fort Solanga, East Northport, Dix Hills area. And we are in 100% agreement with Mr. Derubius's document of the opinion recommendation to the planning board. We agree, and these are not allegations, as the other council said, that it will double the amount of acreage of heavy industry in the town of Smithtown. Town of Smithtown is a residential community, mostly homes, schools, state parks, beautiful waterfront, and it's not a gershaw construction, gershaw recycling, which this could become under heavy industry. We also agree that it will lower the tax base, as well explained by the planning board. It will increase obnoxious uses. We agree with that statement from the planning board recommendation. It will increase heavy truck traffic on narrow roads that aren't made...that were never made to handle this kind of traffic, tractor-trailers with heavy loads. Also, there are school buses that go up and down these roads, and they could be in danger. Already, there have been several fatal accidents at Pulaski Road and Town Line Road. One waste truck lost its brakes and toppled over and crushed a woman in a car. It will also increase more dis- It will also increase more disorderly development of what's already there. Everybody has a right to make a living. I respect the Carlsons. They've been there for generations. They're hard workers, and maybe something could be done with the zoning to allow existing uses, but that's up to the board, but no extended or new uses. Also, as stated in Mr. Derubius's document, it's not proper for the area, heavy industry.
That recommendation, by the way, if we do refer it there to the Town Board, that, all of Mr. Derubius's comments will be to the Town Board for their consideration. Everything has been said in there.
Yes, and we agree with his comments. And I'd just like to submit this for the record. It's a map of the town of Smithtown showing the miniscule amounts of heavy mining, sand mining, in a town mostly residential with not that kind of usage. I'll bring these up later. A very crucial piece of information is a finding by the Suffolk County Health Services dated May 24, 2012. This entire parcel is under an Article VII Water Aquifer Deep Recharge Protection Zone. There are limited zones for aquifer recharge. It's our sole source of drinking water. Heavy industry, again, like the previous person said, can open the floodgates to uses that could endanger our water supply. Petroleum storage, millions of gallons can be stored. Obnoxious uses like metal plating, for example, where cyanide and cadmium and heavy metals are stored in tanks above ground, that can potentially endanger the water supply. So, I would like to submit this document, again, all at the same time, of the finding of the Suffolk County Health Department.
I'm sure that Mr. Derubius has that document already.
Oh. Okay. I'd like to submit this map of sensitive areas around, within a five-mile radius of the potential heavy industry zoning. There are about 100 schools, nursery schools, high schools, senior residences, the VA Hospital, that could be severely impacted by converting to more heavy industry with obnoxious uses, odors, fumes, pollution, et cetera. In addition to the existing uses, of course, right across the street is the Huntington incinerator. The incinerator's there, and we are already a heavily burdened area. Depending upon which way the wind blows, the pollutants coming out of the incinerator circulate heavily around the entire area. There are carcinogens, heavy metals, arsenic, cadmium, nickel, benzene, hydrofluorans, and these all cause cancer, bronchitis, emphysema, birth defects. So, we have a heavily burdened area already. Heavy industry can increase that significantly. Plus, there's the asphalt plant just on the other side of the Sactico's Parkway. I have the emission statement from the Huntington incinerator showing the pollutants, and I'll give that to you also. A possible use of the site is, could be a power plant. There were several mentions, that none has been proposed. However, I do have the descriptive brochure for the Competitive Energy Smithtown Energy Center planned for the northwest quarter of the Carlson property, and it details a 400-megawatt power plant tapped into the Iroquois Pipeline. There's a similar plant in Yap Hank, the Cathance Plant. It's 350 megawatts, a very similar design, Siemens, and it stores 650,000 gallons of number-two fuel oil on site. So, putting a power plant, which is just one heavy industry use, on that site, you can expect a half a million to a million gallons of number-two fuel oil under heavy industry use with the power plant proposal, and I'll give that to you shortly. This is a toxic targeting environmental report of the property in question, the 84 acres. And over the years, there have been dozens of documented DEC spills, enforcement actions, toxic waste releases. I'm not going to go through 198 pages, just the three pages of it. Toxic spill history, Carlson site, here are 11 spills with DEC action on map one. Next page, toxic spills and releases, 14 enforcement actions. Next page, petroleum releases, oil lubricants, et cetera. There are 25 spills and releases. And this is under light industry. What's going to happen if it becomes heavy industry? You let the genie out of the cork, this, which cost hundreds of dollars for Town Line Organization, I will give you.
Okay.
That's my presentation. Do you have?
You can give Mr. Derubius all-
Can I? You have any questions?
No, if you could give Mr. Derubius all of your information there, it'll certainly be carried forward there on however this application goes.
Thank you. I apologize. I found the letter. I know this pediatrician very well, and she might not say the same thing about me. She's my wife. And Dr. Marjorie Seratoff, she's been a pediatrician in Comac area for the last 32 years. She wrote a short statement regarding this. "My name is Dr. Marjorie Seratoff. I'm a pediatrician in Comac area for 32 years. I'm board certified and a member of the AAP. I have treated a variety of pulmonary, which are breathing diseases, including asthma, bronchodictism, cystic fibrosis, chronic sinusitis, and bronchiolitis. It is not in the public interest or benefit to change the Carlson property into heavy industry zoning. The possibility of new intensive heavy industries that emit air pollution like rock crushing, asphalt plants, cement manufacture, plating factories, oil storage depots with heavy truck traffic, et cetera, will sicken and make worse the health of children and adults in the surrounding area. The neighborhood already has a major polluters in the Huntington incinerator and the asphalt factory. Well, Lyland has the highest cancer rate in the state. It is unconscionable that the town of Smithtown change the zoning to heavy industry that will make matters worse. Signed, Dr. Seratoff."
Thank you.
I'll give you everything.
My name is Tony Haberman. I live at 55 Peppermint Road, Comac. I'm a resident of this Peppermint Road. Peppermint. It borders the Carlson property. I've been a resident of this area for over 10 years. I was at this meeting earlier this year when this proposal was originally requested. At that time, the meeting was adjourned. You were also directly notified me that I would be informed by you. You were given my email address stating that I would be informed of this meeting. I was not. As you mentioned before, the meeting is recorded by a stenographer and also recorded, that is on record. I was not informed of this meeting whatsoever. So, again, I request that this may be adjourned and give us the opportunity for our community and our residents to be more well-informed of what's going on and exactly what is going to be proposed on the Carlson property. Secondly, the Carlson owner basically said to you, there has been many, not many violations whatsoever. We have documentation over and over of violations, of environmental violation, noise pollution, and so on. Again, the credibility of the Carlson, to me, based on the data that you could see, is not credible. So, if you have a person that says to you, to your face, that he was going to work with you, the community, the residents, it is totally untrue. I am part of the Comac Town Line Association. When we were fighting the power plant PPNL eight years ago, we repeatedly, repeatedly asked to speak to him, to work with him. Our requests were repeatedly denied over and over and over. So, for somebody to tell me to my face and to my neighbors that they're willing to work with us, I don't think so. So, again, I appreciate your respect with this, but we again, we expect that this meeting be adjourned. Thank you.
Would you give your email address to Mr. Derubius or his assistant over here? And then they'll definitely get you a notice.
But you just said, again-
I don't have a-
No, I'm just saying, sir, you just made it clear to my associate that just that post on the, based on this meeting, be sufficient. And our previous meeting, that wasn't clear.
Well, it's sufficient-
No, it's sufficient under the law.
Right.
It's not sufficient there. If you want to be notified specifically, you give your email address-
And you gave me your word, sir, that you would, and your word was not honored.
Listen, I don't have, I don't do computers.
I'm just saying, but I'm holding-
Okay.
You are my, sir, you are my representative, and I trust your judgment to follow through on what you said. So, I'm just, that's why I'm asking point-blank. You said, "If the next meeting is held, you will be contacted." I wasn't.
Well, you should have been. If you give him the address, he'll contact you.
But again, sir, if we are a community and you're representing us, these citizens, you're here to protect us, help us do a better job notifying the community versus one little sign.
He's done what was required by the law.
We're asking you to go above the law.
Now, I come down here once every two weeks. Okay? The same there as every other board member. We are not in constant contact there with the whole community all the time. That is Mr. Derubius's job. Okay? So, if you want to be notified specifically-
Yes, sir.
You give your email address to Mr. Derubius, and you'll be contacted specifically.
I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. We'll sit down to him.
My name is Anne Guglione. I live at 41 Marshmallow Drive in Comac, New York. G U A G L I O N E. In the 2007 Smithtown Comprehensive Plan, the town of Smithtown writes, and I quote, "The quality of life within a community begins with its natural environment. Cultural and visual resources define the character of a community and provide the basis for a sense of place." And yet, in the words of Mr. Derubius in a recent news article, "The area known as the Kings Park industrial area is the, quote, 'Wild, Wild West' when it comes to zoning. The blatant disregard for the rules has gone on for far too long. The business owners have proven that they are not to be trusted by their well-documented illegal behavior." This is not made up. For close to two decades, residents have complained to the planning board, to the Smithtown board, about the offensive odors, the heavy and dangerous truck traffic on roads not designed for heavy truck traffic, and the poor air quality coming from these businesses. A recent toxic targeting report shows dozens of spills, toxic releases, and environmental damage the Carlsons and other properties have allowed over the years, and it is not currently zoned heavy industry. What will happen if even more intensive industries start up in the area? A study by the University of Chicago showed that the effects of amenity such as power plants, hazardous waste facilities, chemical manufacturing, and others, with respect to the impact on residential property sales, leave substantial effects on property values. Quote, "There is a dynamic consideration to adding a disamenity to an area. A well-known tendency is that blight begets blight. If a disamenity is added that is of little or no benefit to a community, there is a tendency to take that attitude that the harm is already done, and adding another inappropriate site is simply putting light things together, as is blight begets blight tendency. The bar will be lowered on what is considered acceptable for future additions. The area is cast into a continuing downward cycle of increasing disamenity in the future." End quote. "It appears these concerns have fallen on deaf ears. This area has been allowed to become blighted due to neglect. You, the Town Board, and the Planning Board have, in effect, become enablers to these businesses, and to now sanction it further by allowing this rezoning to occur would truly be a travesty. There are zero benefits to the residents to rezone certain parts of the area as heavy industry. This is about profit and greed. Heavy industry will cut tax revenues for the town because it is the lowest taxed zone. The residents lose, the town loses. A zoning change will be incompatible with residential living. We have a right to sanctity and must be allowed to live peacefully. Our rights are being infringed upon by the business owners. Yes, the business owners have rights as well, but they clearly have abused the system. The laws are in place to ensure that activities conducted in those areas do not conflict with the rights of nearby landowners to use and enjoy their property in peace. The residents have looked to you, the members of the board, to protect our rights as tax-paying citizens." The Smithtown Comprehensive Plan further states, quote, "Society has learned that developing purely for economic gain creates communities with lower qualities of life, with little sense of community pride and insufficient resources upon which to survive. The idea that you would reward businesses that ignore their zoning so that they can do what they want whenever they want while making lots of money doing it is like giving your teenager, after getting a speeding ticket, instead of taking the cars away, you go out and you buy him a sports car. Let's stop rewarding bad behavior. We all want a solution? Just say no." Thank you.
Let's try it again. Good evening, town zone members. My name is Robert Semprini, and I reside at 11 Del Mar Lane. And just for the record, I am not wearing burlap underwear. I am wearing frill loom size 32 and very comfortable. I'm here to represent the Comac Community Association. I'd like to read this statement, and I'd like to address a couple of the comments that were made by the Carlson family. "On behalf of the organization, I want to publicly voice our concerns regarding the lack of proper zoning of the parcels of land located on Old Northport Road. At the zoning board meeting a few weeks ago, of which I attended, including the president of our organization, Bruce Ettenberg, Frank Derubius had presented various options for economic development for the properties south of Indian Head Road and the property north of Indian Head Road. Although we believe that all the properties should be classified as light industry, we acknowledge that the lack of oversight of these properties over the past 30 years has allowed heavy industry activities. As a result, any legal proceedings against the landowners, I believe, would decide on behalf of the landowners, as this activity has become the normal way of conducting business." That is not to say that there shouldn't be any restrictions. "Our greatest concern is regarding the parcel of land at the crossroads of Town Line Road and Old Northport Road, where once again, a power plant company, CPV, as previously mentioned, from Maryland, last time, PPNL from Pennsylvania, proposed a potential 250-watt megawatt plant on the Carlson property. After speaking with Councilman Werheim the other day, I understood that the town of Smithtown was approached by this company six months ago, but has not heard from them since. I want to make it very clear that the town of Comac, via the Town Line Association, has valiantly fought this battle once before and won against a Fortune 500 company." And the Comac Community Association stands shoulder to shoulder with them and any other civic association who is against this power plant, which would be a health disaster for our community. The lack of properly zoning these properties is the root of the problem, and as long as this condition exists, power plant after power plant will continue to knock on Smithtown's doors looking for an opportunity. My suggestion is that perhaps the Town Board's zoning department needs to hire an outside consultant firm to look at these properties with a fresh set of eyes. That's no disrespect to the board itself, but sometimes, it's always good just to get someone else's opinion in development. Ideally, what the Comac Community Association would like to see in conjunction with the proper zoning- zoning is a law stating that a power plant will never be built on these properties. The Town Line Association, as you know, is here tonight. I think they made, they're very passionate, as they should be, on this issue. Again, it's a health issue. And our organization has worked with the Smithtown Town Board for about three years now. We forged a very good relationship with them, and we hope to continue to do so. Anything that we can do to, our organization do, to work with the zoning board to better the situation, knock on our door. Now, as for the gentleman, Mr. Carlson had made a comment before regards to DC monitoring. That sounds very impressive, government, okay? Like they're there every day. As if I remember correctly, at your meeting, Mr. Derubius said there's a parcel of land south of Indian Head Road on Old Northport Road that was not compacted correctly, and therefore cannot be built on it. That means that the so-called DEC oversight was not much of an oversight. Now that land, which could have been properly used to bring in tax revenue, is not going to bring in anything. Regarding the truck traffic on Town Line Road, Mr. Carlson mentioned that they would like to work with us, but they haven't, okay? Nor have any of the businesses up that way. The Smithtown Traffic Safety Department, working with our organization, has already put the meters on Town Line Road. We have 14,400 vehicles that travel that road daily, with quite a few tractor-trailer trucks, okay, which are absolutely destroying that road and don't belong there, okay? Now, if Mr. Carlson or any of the other property owners kind of want to work with us, then they should have worked with us, if they're so concerned about the community, okay? They have got no right to destroy the quality of life. They have no right to destroy the roads that we are on. They have no right to put our kids in danger, okay? When you have a surplus of 3,000 children between Town Line, excuse me, with, excuse me, Comac High School and the elementary school, Northridge Elementary, sitting right there. But where's the concern? Now there's concern? Okay? Because I live three blocks from there, I witness this every day. I've seen these tractor-trailer trucks go through the red lights, speed through the zones, make erratic maneuvers that only you think that a small car would do, okay? There was an accident there several months ago, right across from Cornflower, that caused an accident because of one of the trucks that was there. As Mr. Seratoff has indicated a couple of years ago, we already had a death, all right? So if they're so concerned about this, you should have done something a long time ago, not now, okay? That's it. That's it. That's all I really have to say. Again, we are in line with any civic association to stop the power plants. As you mentioned before, it was unknown to me that you didn't need a zoning change for that, but regardless, we don't need it, and we don't want it, okay? It might bring in tax revenue for the town, but the community as a whole, all right, is going to suffer a consequence of bad health, all right? And that money is going to be spread around, spending thousands, tens of thousands of dollars on healthcare, and it's actually just no benefit, absolutely no benefit to our community. So I thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Good evening, sir. How are you? I last saw you in January.
Give you a name and address, please.
My name is Laura Shafer. I live at 233 Old Comac Road in Kings Park, New York. I came to you in January, and you advised me to go to the town board, which I have been going to, and we've been trying to appeal to the board and to, you know, a bunch of different places, organizations, a DEC, for help with this matter. Toby Carlson says he's not mulching. Well, here's a picture of the mulch that I took today at Toby Carlson's yard, okay? So if Mr. Carlson, the problem with Mr. Carlson is he can't be honest, so therefore he can't be trusted, okay? Would anybody, if anybody else would like to see them, here you go.
Please, will you bring things you have over to us?
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, sir.
Would you bring whatever you have over to the board members? That's the way that we operate here. Thank you. Okay.
And also, if you'd like to walk down the train tracks, you will see pallets and pallets of mulch, where he's filling the bags of mulch, and actually, he's selling them, one facility is the Home Depot. Correct, Toby? Am I right, Toby?
Please, will you address everything that you have to say to the board?
Okay. In the Newsday today, the picture in the Newsday, he put up the variance sign in front of his yard that faces the tree across the street. I have taken pictures of it because I had phoned Mr. Derubius, asking him where these signs were, because it was only one sign. You can see it right here, flat in front of his yard, and it faces the tree. So that's another thing that I felt that was done on purpose, that nobody knew about this meeting. Mr. Derubius advised me that he gave him about 12 signs. Well, I drove around to Town Line Road, and I went down Old Northport Road, and I went all over the place. I didn't see any other signs. I went by Glen Lane, where Mr. Derubius advised me that he advised him to put it there. So can you tell me, as the board, what is the procedure for putting up these signs?
Mr. Derubius.
Okay. Basically, I have my zoning person here, and it's actually four signs that we gave them. Is that correct? And they're posted on any public thoroughfare, since there's multiple ones. He had to post them on the back end of the property, on Meadow Glen, has to post them on Old Northport Road, there has to be one on Town Line Road.
Did anybody see any there?
No.
Okay.
Listen, again, we don't enforce the town codes. That is done by somebody else. We are here as a board to listen to your complaints and then to make a recommendation to the town board or not of what you have, what you have brought to us. We don't enforce, we don't, we're not traffic safety, we're not public safety. We don't do anything like that. So it's only something that we can't handle here. It only wastes our time, and it's very valuable.
You can't handle it. You need to be a board of behavior.
Excuse me, sir. If you want to address this board, I'll give you the opportunity. If you want to address, say it. It'll be your pleasure, but not in the back of the room. I've said to you, I'm going to have public safety escort you out of the place if you do that. It's not the way to have a hearing. That's what this is, is a hearing.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Today, I got an email from a neighbor of mine.
Oh, excuse me. They're changing the tape upstairs. We'll take a five-minute recess, and that way everybody can-